... they may faithfully fulfill the duties of their office to promote and protect the well-being of all citizens in Virginia Beach. Give them courage and foresight to not only provide for the needs of our community, but also to be conscientious and careful stewards of the natural resources with which we have been entrusted. May the members of this city council serve our community with humble hearts for the common good. We ask for your continued blessings of care, compassion, and countenance upon our city and upon our broken world. All this we ask in the name of the eternal light. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And the roll call, Madam Clerk?
All present, sir.
Okay, great. I ask for the certification of the closed session.
So moved.
Second. Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, do I have a motion to certify the minutes of the informal and former formal sessions of September 3rd, 2019?
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special session of September 10th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Vote is open.
Mr. Tower, may I have your vote? Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
All right, we have a special presentation from a special person at this point. Karen Forger, will you kind of step forward? And I understand you have a resolution for it. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Dyer, city council members, Mr. Leahy and Mr. Stiles. It's our honor to be here this evening representing the Board of Directors of Lynn Haven River Now and the staff from Lynn Haven River Now to present our resolution. There's an original copy of the resolution with the original signatures that I have provided to the clerk. So this was passed on August 12th, 2019. Resolution honoring the victims of the tragic shooting in Virginia Beach, Virginia. Whereas Lynn Haven River Now was founded in 2002 to restore and protect the Lynn Haven River in Virginia Beach. Whereas we have worked in remarkable partnership with city leaders and city staff throughout the past seventeen years. Whereas together we have made significant strides toward our goal of a clean and healthy natural environment throughout our city, expanding our work to all the waterways in Virginia Beach. Whereas the city staff have contributed meaningfully to that progress and are our valued partners. Whereas the shootings that occurred in Building 2 on May 31st, 2019, killed or injured sixteen highly valued city staff members and devastated their families and our entire community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors Lynn Haven River Now, one, honors all city colleagues for their service, dedication, skill, and hard work for our community; two, applauds and appreciates the skill and dedication of the first responders who came to the aid of the wounded and distressed staff members and contained the dreadful situation; three, supports all city leaders and city staff members as we regain our equilibrium and move forward as a community; four, recognizes specifically those who worked tirelessly and unselfishly to help Lynn Haven River Now to fulfill our mission over the years. Mary Louise Gale, who was instrumental in the Lynn Haven River Eastern Branch Sanctuary Worcester Reef Grounds Transfer, is honored by naming the reef to be constructed in the eastern branch of the Mary Louise Gale Reef. Richard Nettleton and Tara Gallagher, who worked closely with Lynn Haven River Now staff in the implementation of numerous water quality improvement projects by dedicating a commemorative plaque in their memory in the Lynn Haven River Now office at the Brock Environmental Center. Five, reaffirms its longstanding affection and admiration for all city employees, especially those lost in this tragedy, by creating in partnership with the city a memorial garden in the municipal center complex accessible to all city staff, families, and citizens at a location selected by the city. Our community has forever been changed by the catastrophic events of May 31st, 2019. We will take, it will take time for us to heal, but we are Virginia Beach strong and we will move forward with even greater strength, compassion, and resolve while remembering and honoring those who perished.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much Lynn Haven River Now for being a bedrock and the foundation of the soul of Virginia Beach and for all your, your just great efforts on behalf of making us a great city, the great city we are, and yes, VB strong. Thank you and God bless you.
Well, thank you. And sincerely, everything that we have accomplished has been a community accomplishment. And the city staff members who have worked with us and city leadership are a big part of that effort and will continue to be.
Thank you.
So thank you.
We look forward to it. Thank you. Okay, at this point I have an add-on proclamation to request of Council Lady Henley, which I think is more than appropriate. Where is the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law? And whereas September 17th, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas public law 1915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore now, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of Virginia Beach, on behalf of this council also, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2019, Constitution Week. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Barbara, please.
Actually, this proclamation was drawn up at the request of the DAR because the Constitution Week is a part of one of their major celebrations. And at four o'clock today on the steps of Upper Wolf Snare, they read this proclamation. Upper Wolf Snare was the home of Thomas Walk IV, who was one of the two delegates of Princess Anne County to the Constitutional Convention in Richmond. His cousin, Anthony Walk, was the other delegate. And they, in June of 1788, attended the Virginia Session in Richmond. And in a rather contested vote, which carried 89 to 79, Virginia agreed to ratify the Constitution and our two delegates to the Constitution voted in the affirmative. I think it's very important that we remember these things that happened and, you know, prior to our time and the people who were a part of it. And this, I think it's very good that the DAR particularly remembers that the Constitution Week is an extremely important time and so we're glad to be able to support them.
And thank you for bringing this to light. Appreciate that. Okay?
Senator Harry Bird did that under law.
Right. All right, moving on to public hearings. Number one, lease a city property, Hampton Road Soccer Complex, 2185 Recreation Drive.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
I'm going to speak on the public hearing and when you vote, so if I don't finish, I'll finish then. These leases, they aren't making any money. It's usually a dollar a year lease to these private corporations. I don't think the Virginia Beach Economic Development or the city has been making money. We actually have two billion debt and there's a reason we have debt and unfunded liabilities. Sports projects get education funds, federal education funds, Public Private Education Act. That should be going to our classrooms. No portable trailers should be used for our children. Some of them are rusty and with all the problems with crime, the children should all be inside the building. They shouldn't be in portable trailers. Someone else was signed up, but I don't know if they're here, but they should disclose who they're speaking for. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers signed up, sir.
Okay, public hearing number two on non-exclusive franchise use, PEG Bandwidth V A L L C.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Mr. Leahy. I didn't notice you at the last meeting, so good evening. On the broadband and cell towers, and I would like to say, this is, there's only two city council meetings. And except for Conrad, who's run for office in the Centerville District and he's running this year, there, there aren't any candidates. They're out fundraising and everything else. I think people who claim to care about the city should be speaking out, reading the agendas and speaking out. Ms. Wilson, on your disclosure, you shouldn't be discussing or voting on anything to do with broadband and cell tower. Your own disclosure states financial ties to this industry, and you've been appointed to a council, by council on this, and your financial conflicts that you stated in 2016, which I assume apply today, Carrie Clark and Sarah Howe. As a Realtor with Prudential Decker, then Berkshire Hathaway Town Realty, and now Howard Hanna, everything that happens with cell towers, which are extremely dangerous because of the radiation, you know, that's a conflict since you sell condos and homes. The cell towers are going to take the right-of-ways, either temporarily or permanently, and the right-of-ways are to, were created for access for residents as a buffer for traffic and when they enter and exit neighborhoods and shopping centers. So I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I address that, please?
Yes.
You could sit down, Barbara. I just want to say something. I'm not having a conversation with you right now. I just wanted to address what you said.
Okay, but it would be nice if you would, since I'm the only one here, if you would respond to me or contact me. You've emailed me once since you've been in office.
The Carrie and Sarah are my daughters that she brought up. And my oldest daughter Carrie at one time worked for Google, which is not broadband. And she no longer works there anymore. And my daughter Sarah does private consulting, work for nonprofits.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. No other speakers on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Public hearing number three, open-air cafe franchise agreement, Camellus Incorporated, Ninth Street Grill at 812 Atlantic Avenue.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Which item is that, under J?
No, it's under public hearings.
The third public hearing.
The third public hearing.
Wait, because I'm signed up under J ordinances, so I'll wait.
Okay, at this point we can do the consent agenda. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, move for approval under the consent agenda under ordinances. Item J seven, ordinance to accept and appropriate $25,000 from the FY 1920 Supreme Court of Virginia Drug Treatment Court docket grant to FY 201920 Commonwealth Attorney Operating Budget Regarding Care for VB ADTC Participants and to authorize an N-KIND Grant Match. Item 7B, $15,000 from the 12th Annual Virginia Beach Business Appreciation Charity Golf Classic and Networking Reception and authorize three equal donations to the Health Science Academy at Bayside High School, Envision Lead Grow Incorporated, and the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kempsville High School. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Votes are, votes open.
Mr. Burke, oh, sorry. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
All right, we're going to be moving on to ordinances now. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number to the clerk for the record. All right, moving on to the first one, ordinances to confirm the declaration of local emergency, Ray Hurricane Dorian.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Mr. Sessoms, Will Sessoms used to let me speak on more than one thing so I didn't have to get up and sit down. Is there anyone else signed up to speak today?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. And I'll stick to this. Okay. I just want to ask, you know, every time there's a declaration, like after flooding and everything, a lot of the FEMA money, a lot of this money goes to the oceanfront and other projects. And I just want to be assured that every time there's a declaration, that the money is going to the neighborhoods that have been neglected for a long time because we have major problems with flooding throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move approval?
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion? Votes open. All right, moving forward, ordinances to...
I'm sorry, I pushed it, but it's fine. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the ordinance to confirm the declaration of a local emergency.
Okay, we'll move on to J two and we'll do each one individually. Ordinance to amend the city code, Part A, Sections 25 through 50 and 23 through 50 dash one, Ray accumulations of trash and garbage, excess growth of weeds and grass, and removal of certain trees.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Almost all of these agendas, you're amending the city code. And this was 102, five pages. I didn't have time to read all of them because it's, you know, the new website, it's kind of hard to read. But is it, does anyone choose to say what these changes are? Can you discuss it on the record for the people who might be watching or what this is? Because I saw that we were going to be charged more and the size of the tree branches and all of the bagged leaves and everything, all the debris, which, you know, for many of us hasn't been picked up yet. You know, it's going to be smaller amounts. So can we have smaller fees if we're going to be able to have, you know, smaller amounts that we put out for trash? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, John, did you...
I just wanted, this ordinance has nothing to do with changing fees or restricting people, what they put out for trash. This is a housekeeping technical change.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the ordinance to amend city code Section 23-50 and 23-50.1.
All right, ordinances to amend city code, Part B, Section 35 through 68, Ray changes in circumstances for the elderly and disabled tax relief program.
I have two speakers. The first one's Conrad Shisvinter, and the second speaker is Barbara Messner.
Welcome, Conrad.
And I will admit, I thought I would chew. But in any case, I do generally support anyone if they can escape property taxes. So if you would like to help them out with that, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner.
Mr. Moss, your explanation was, was not really an explanation, and you just can't wait. You know, since I've called you out for a lot of your conflicts lately, you seem to be taking it personally. You've blocked, you email me once in the last four years and I email everyone with my correspondence. I think it would be polite and respectful, since I take the time to come here and I ask specifics, you know, cleaning house and change, you know, that's not much of an answer. You know, what are the changes in circumstances for the elderly and disabled tax relief? Mr. Rouse, you know, when you ran and, you know, you've done a lot, you know, to try to help the community. I don't know if you're aware, a few years back, the city voted to raise the amount for the disabled and the elderly that to, I think it was dropped to 58,000. So people making small amounts of money still, you know, they lost their tax relief. So are you familiar with this, this issue that's on the agenda? Have you read the full thing?
Every day's in there every week.
Okay. Well, I'm asking, do you know what the, any changes might be? Because, you know, it's been in place.
Yep, yep, yeah, yeah. Ms. Messner, please, you know, stick to the issue, please.
Right. I hope they're not going to punish the elderly and disabled. That's all, that's the only reason I'm speaking out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Move approval.
Okay. Discussion? Vote is open.
I will, this doesn't, this only addresses someone whose particular situation changes during the year, and it doesn't change the amounts.
It actually, it actually increases the A to, it's a further relief to those people, not a restriction of that relief.
This was requested...
Okay, one at a time, please. Okay, thank you. John?
This was requested by the Commissioner of the Revenue because he was experiencing people that otherwise should receive relief because the ordinance current policy says you look back at your prior year income when you're applying for income in the future. And some peoples have losses and current change of circumstance, and he wasn't able to provide relief, though they needed relief. And knowing that this is a very caring government, if we can make a policy work, we try to make it work to the advantage of our citizens, he requested this relief so that he could be more responsive to the changed circumstances of the elderly. It's a very constructive and positive change.
Okay, thank you. Votes open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve the ordinance to amend city code Section 35-68.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, ordinance number three, to grant franchise agreements to A, peg band...
To C.
Okay. Oh, to C, my apologies. To C is Section 3242 Tax Exemption Program administered by the Commissioner of Revenue.
I have two speakers. The first speaker is Conrad Shisvinter, and the next speaker will be Barbara Messner. Conrad, you don't want to speak? Okay. Barbara Messner?
Thank you, Ms. Henley, for the explanation. If the city would post the full agenda in advance when you all receive it the Friday before the meeting, we would have time to call and email everyone and get the information. As far as the Commissioner of the Revenue, Phil Kellum's been there a very, very long time, and the city's just started these full-page ads. The pilot somehow isn't giving you free ads, so these usually cost one to 3,000, I don't know, depends on how many you do. But Commissioner of Revenue also has these full-page ads. I think there's other ways that we can notify people. You can have these posted in the library, the DMV, the rec centers, because everyone isn't online, everyone isn't on Facebook, and obviously everyone doesn't read the agenda and come to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I have a question for the city clerk.
Question?
Sir?
When does the agenda get posted?
It's posted Thursday afternoon by two o'clock prior to the Tuesday meeting.
What time does the council get their packages?
Friday after six.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval.
Approval, second. Votes open.
Mr. Tower, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, our system's a little slow. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved city, ordinance to amend city code 35-42.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number three under ordinances, A, peg bandwidth V A L L C, Ray install, maintain, and operate telecommunications facilities in the public streets and right-of-way.
I have two speakers. The first speaker is Jeffrey Strankowski. And then the next speaker will be Barbara Messner.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I am Jeffrey Strankowski. I'm vice president, deputy general counsel of peg bandwidth on the applicant and the, on the party requesting the franchise agreement with the city. We obviously support the work that you guys are doing. We support the work with the city attorney's office that we worked with in reaching this agreement. We essentially took the city's agreement, the standard agreement, and we have accepted the terms of it. And I would support the approval of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner?
There've been lots of speakers that have spoken out about the cell towers and, anyway, Ms. Wilson's already said that she no longer has conflicts, but she does still have conflicts with Howard Hanna, her current applicant, and she sells homes, condos, whatever, all over the city. So I think these cell towers, some of them are right next to the fire station, like Princess Anne Plaza. I mean, there is extremely dangerous, and some of the cell towers have towers on top of each other, they're shared. But one of my major concerns is the right-of-ways. The right-of-ways are buffers for, for traffic, you know, for major intersections, shopping centers, and into neighborhoods. So when you allow companies to, to have construction anytime they want, you know, it does interfere and create problems for the neighborhoods and for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Votes open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the ordinance to grant a franchise agreement to PEG Bandwidth Virginia LLC.
Okay, under ordinances, three, Part B, Camellus Incorporated, Ninth Street Grill at 812 Atlantic Avenue, Ray Open Air Cafe.
I have, if Ms. Messner doesn't want to speak, I have one speaker, Conrad Shisvinter.
I didn't even know I was up for the other one. But in any case, I like the idea of this one-year trial lease for businesses to try out the beach and public locations, so I would like them to have a shot at this. Please vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Messner, you do not want to speak on this item?
This isn't, this one may be a first time for this applicant, but some of them have been getting these renewals, I think, since the 90s. It's like, most of these cafes, we, we have a state law against selling and serving alcohol in public, which, you know, those laws aren't enforced anymore, and the cafes are just a way to go around the state law and sell alcohol. a way to go around the state law and sell alcohol, you know, at these cafes, which are using, usually using either the grassy knolls in front of the boardwalk, or they're using the sidewalks. I mean, the sidewalks you allow, skateboards, I mean, there are sidewalks, boardwalk, roads, everything is restricted access, and there's a lot of, a lot of accidents. And there are a lot of underage people that can have access to alcohol when you have it in these cafes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the speakers.
Okay.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, votes open.
By vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the ordinance to grant a franchise agreement to Kamalas Inc.
Okay, under item ordinances four, ordinance to extend the date to satisfy the conditions, Ray, closing of 10,645 square-foot portion of right-of-way known as Lord Dunmore Drive.
Barbara Messner? No? Okay, no speakers.
No speakers? Okay.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, votes open.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the ordinance to extend the date to satisfy the conditions.
Moving on to ordinances five, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads Soccer Council.
I have two speakers. The first one's Conrad Shisventer, and then the next speaker will be Barbara Messner.
This is what I thought the third thing I was going to talk about was. And to my understanding, this is allowing them to use the soccer complex for more than just soccer, and I would endorse that idea as long as they follow other city codes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner?
Good evening. Yeah, I just think it would be nice for Conrad to say that he works in the hotel industry, and all these projects are to fill hotel rooms year-round. Sports is a major way that they can fill the hotel rooms in the off-season. Like I said, this uses, this project uses public education money to be built, and we aren't making any money. So we have debt. I don't know, y'all already decide what you're going to do. He's speaking for the hotel industry, and I'm speaking because I don't, I don't like the way the city manages their money and the process. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Do I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Mr. Rouse, may I have your vote, please? That's okay. By vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease agreement.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number six, ordinance to appropriate an interest-free loan from Fund Balance for a purchase of new ambulance, A, $154,002 to Plaza Volunteer Fire Company and Rescue Squad.
So I have one speaker on items six, A, B, and C.
Okay. Can we do them all at once?
It's all for the same purpose.
Okay, let me read just for the record, the other two. Okay, part B to that is $244,752 to the Chesapeake Beach Volunteer Fire Company and Rescue Department Incorporated, and C, $180,000 to Kempsville Rescue Squad Incorporated.
Barbara Messner?
Good evening. This is an interest-free loan from the Fund Balance. It's amazing how you find money for what you want. This is Volunteer Volunteer and Kempsville Rescue Squad. We have a budget. We should be sticking to the budget. Why do you even have a budget and have us come to all these meetings and then you, you move the money around? Our police, fire, and rescue, they've been asking for help with the unfunded balance. You know, they have lib, they don't have the full funding for their health care, and they don't have the pensions. So I just think they're full-time employees, and they should be taken care of. This is a lot of money after the fact. Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, votes open.
By vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the ordinances to appropriate interest-free loan for the volunteer rescue squads.
All right, now, under ordinances number seven, C, and that would be $52,000 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles to fiscal year 2019-20 Police Department Operating Budget, Ray, Click It or Ticket Campaign.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Thank you, Amanda and Paige, for your help all the time. I appreciate it. If y'all, if somebody who's listening, because speaking to y'all is just like speaking to a brick wall, excuse me for being blunt, but that's how I feel. If you look at the website, Institute for Justice, they go after, you know, governments that abuse their power. They've been winning lawsuits all the way up to the Supreme Court on policing for profit. $48,000 from Virginia DMV Police Operating Budget DUI Enforcement. If you wouldn't approve, like, $4 million for these breweries that do not have to have a restaurant license, they don't serve food, and they're open just like a bar, now New Realm Brewery is going to have a restaurant? I mean, this is so unfair to all the restaurants, brick-and-mortar restaurants that can't compete. As I said, all of these, you know, we have problems with giving out tickets, but if the police were on the street corners, they were proactive and patrolling, we wouldn't have as much crime, and crime is a major problem that I don't see any candidates or incumbents talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, vote is open. Yes, sir, John?
I just want to make, I normally not respond to all of Ms. Messner's comments, but the inference in her dialogue was somehow our police department gives tickets for profits. That's far from the truth. The statistics have shown that they give very few tickets relative to other communities, and they rely upon relationships and conversations with our citizens to get compliance, and it works, and it really was a berserk, an inference that's just uncalled for in our police department. I don't want the public to think, not by responding to that at any credibility, it just does not.
I appreciate your comments.
Ms. Henley, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the ordinance regarding Click It or Ticket Campaign.
Okay, and the last ordinance for consideration is 7D, $48,000 from the Virginia Beach Department of Motor Vehicles to the FY 2019-20 Police Operating Budget, Ray, DUI Enforcement.
One speaker, Barbara Messner.
John Moss, you are an embarrassment that you wait till I sit down and then you insult me. I am tired of it. I have spoken since the 90s. You've gone on and off council, I don't know how many times, I can't keep track. I used to come to city council when Bobby Matheson was part of the police benevolent and speak out for pay raises for police. It's not the police, it's how they're directed and what they're told to do. So don't insult me, act as if I don't know what's going on. I've been coming to council more years than you've been on council. And there is a problem with, as I said, we need proactive, we need the police on street corners, and we need less bars, not more approval of ABC licenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Vote is open. Okay, at this...
By vote of 11 to 0, you approve the ordinance regarding DUI enforcement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, we have no appointments, any unfinished business? Just the one thing under...
That can't be unfinished.
Okay, under new business, I'd just like to say, this council respects every speaker that comes in front of it, and will allow them the opportunity. And, you know, we have a discussion that we're going to have in council to allow a speaker, if they are the only one speaking on particular items, you know, to come forward and speak, you know, initially, and give them the right to speak. But this was going to be a council discussion and deliberation going forward in the interest to be fair to everyone, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you.